Regular meeting number eight will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Good and gracious God, we ask you to give your wisdom and presence to the members of Columbus City Council as they meet this evening to conduct the business of our city. In their deliberations, Lord, help them to remember the voiceless, the homeless, and those who suffer because of the cold, those who suffer because of the brutally cold weather we've had to endure lately. The citizens of Columbus look to the members of council for leadership and for solutions to the many problems that face them day by day, and they trust that you will give them what they need to be able to fulfill the trust that voters have placed in them. Also, let us take a moment of silence to remember former Mayor Dana Buck Reinhardt, who has passed from our midst. Lord, may you be a comfort to his family and to all of those who miss him. May Buck's love for Columbus and its citizens always be an inspiration for all of us, and may you, God, give to him rest and peace forever. Amen.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Harden. Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Council President Ginther. I'd like to recognize my newest staff member, Gina Space. Welcome to City Council, and why don't you stand up so you can be recognized? She's eager to serve the city, and we welcome her. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein, President Pro Tem Mills.
Thank you, President Ginther. I don't have a resolution, but I do have an announcement and presentation for the listening and viewing audience. I'm going to ask Jason Wells and Tony Smith to approach the podium. The African-American settlements and communities in Columbus is an Ohio report, which is a product of the Columbus Landmarks Foundation's two-year African-American landmarks preservation initiative, and the research and publication were supported in part by a major grant from the Ohio Humanities Council, as well as a Richard and Julie Mo fund of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. The initiative recruited volunteers, provided free workshops, research and preservation engaged over 40 volunteers in community-based research, which means there's 40 more educated people about the history and important role African-Americans played in Columbus' history. The report features images and descriptions of the Near East Side, Blackberry Patch, Bromsville, Burnside Heights, and Poindexter Village, Salesville, Flytown, Mud, Sock American Addiction, and many others. It certainly hoped that the research would provide context and historical clues about important buildings, landscapes, and many other things that have been preserved and/or identified through the research. The volunteer research teams conducted interviews, pored over family histories, census data scrapbooks, old newspaper clippings, maps, and numerous other sources, and most importantly, the voices from those who they had the opportunity to meet and hear from, their experiences, and all of the important stories that I'm sure came out of the research. Without further ado, I'm going to turn the podium over to Mr. Wells and Ms. Smith to share a little bit more about the report and the time spent on an important part of Columbus' history.
Thank you very much. Columbus Landmarks advocates for historic preservation. We were founded in 1977, and we were founded by local residents who were committed to Columbus' architectural heritage, also their design and construction towards sustainable communities and landmarks throughout Columbus. I have with me today Tony Smith, who is on our board and represented us well in the research and efforts behind the report. Tony?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am mostly here to thank you for providing such a wonderful library for the city of Columbus. Without the work and support of Russ Pollitt and the people of the genealogy staff of the Columbus Metropolitan Library, this project would not have come to fruition. Also, I wanted to just recognize a couple of people who took leadership in this project. You mentioned that we recruited over 40 volunteers. That is true. We had a steering committee that included Conrad Hines, Betty Stoll, Carla Wilks, Ray Miller, Kathy Nelson, and Kathy Mast Kane, and in addition, we had team leaders who actually worked with volunteer researchers over this two-year period to cull information for their particular site, and those people included Julia Lynn Walker, Nettie Ferguson, Doreen Uha-Sauer, Becky Ellis, who headed the West Side team, which by itself had only over 40 volunteers, Cheryl and Fred Garrett, and certainly, this was the idea that started with Rita Smith, who is a local historian, and her interest in making sure we acknowledged and preserved as much of our African-American cultural history as possible. So we have some copies of the book to give you, and I'll take... Okay, great. And we want to thank you for your support. Any questions for us?
Thank you very much. It is so important, again, to preserve history, and as we change and as a chair of development, always looking over different new projects and renderings, and you're often wondering about the preservation of those that are there, and how do we do that and manage that as we build for the future, but also maintaining what's the importance of our history at the same time, and it's challenged to do when you grow and population is growing, but we never want to forget the impact and imprint that has been what has considered to be the foundation of the success that we're enjoying now. And so, want to make sure that that is shared with the community, not only through the report, but again, I think through the exchanges, the human contact with folks and their stories and what they remember, and the photographs, I think, makes it come off the page, and not just reading about the history, but the human connection to it, I think, is what will make it live for a long time. So, thank you all for your leadership. I'll allow councilmembers to make comments or ask questions. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chairwoman Mills, for allowing the speakers to be down tonight, and certainly, I want to say thank you to Ms. Smith, who I've known since elementary school, and just appreciate the work that you've done over the years in regards to preserving the African-American history in terms of not only this project, but the arts and others. And to Mr. West, thank you for your work on this. I see some of the individuals who are in the audience today who have worked on this project with you, and just want to say thank you, because obviously, you had to take time away from your families to work on this project, and just really appreciate it. And just again, it's so important, we talk about Columbus being a city that is open to everybody, that we just really understand all the values of every single individual, every culture has made to make Columbus the place it is today, and so, thank you for taking out your time to be able to preserve our history in this way. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And if I could just ask the people who are here who worked on the project, so you can see some of the volunteers, to stand if they would stand, please?
Have them come to the podium. I was getting ready to call them out, but come on up to the podium.
Come on down.
And if you wouldn't mind sharing your name with the rest of us, and tell us one highlight of this project that you would like to share with the listening and viewing audience.
Yes, I'm Betty Stoll, and a longtime person who's worked in the arts and on the east side of Columbus, and certainly feel very strongly about the great community that we have, you know, in the Mount Vernon Avenue, or I should say, the King and Lincoln District. And so, it was just great to work with the others on the project to give a little bit of knowledge that I had.
Good afternoon. My name is Lloyd Clark, and I was one of the researchers on this project, which I really enjoyed, because one of the projects that I worked on was the Franklin Park Medical Center, which was a building that's located at 1829 East Long Street. It's now vacant, but we have hopes to try to get historical preservation for that building because of the history. There's five African-American founders who were doctors, one being a pediatrician, which was my dad, Dr. Arthur L. Clark. So this is some rich history, and we don't want to see all these African-American landmarks, you know, disappear. We want that to be part of our rich culture and our history, and I want to thank for the opportunity with Tony and everybody and the researchers. I really enjoyed this project, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Julia Lynn Walker, and I'll certainly follow up with Lloyd's comments. It will continue, and for me, that's really been the strength of this project, understanding that it is really open or just revealed the tip of the iceberg in terms of the richness of the contributions of African-Americans, and really, everyone who's come through Columbus has made. And although the Columbus Landmarks Foundation focuses on the built environment, in our initial charge, we did look at buildings, and we looked at the buildings that weren't even there anymore, but we understood that in order to bring those buildings to life, we had to think about the people who lived in them, and we had to go to the descendants of people who were still in the community, who remembered their forebears, and then, you know, had photographs and things that they wanted to contribute, and we know that we're going to continue the project, working with other community groups, other foundations, other academic institutions, and the Columbus Public Library, as always, and certainly with your support. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your hard work and your dedication, and certainly look forward to delving into the report, and I'm just really excited about what you talked about, because in development, again, we can get buried into the bricks and mortar side of it, but none of it matters without the people, and that's what makes it all work and what makes it last long. And so, again, as chair of the landscaping and all of the bricks and mortar of the city, I have to always remind some of our folks that it is about the people, and that's why with the development, and this is some of the success that we're enjoying, is because of historic contributions of many others and many folks that you all talked about. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Mills. Councilmember Page?
Thank you, President Ginther. I would like to make an announcement about the 2015 Guide to Summer Fund that was recently issued by Columbus Recreation and Parks Department, and it details a lot of the programs that will be available to our youth in the city throughout the summertime. They have a few meetings that are coming up soon that we would like all residents who have school-aged children to attend. March 10th will be the Camp Fair, and it's going to be held at Franklin Park at 5:30. The next meeting will be for spring registration, March 17th through March 20th, and then camp registration for the summer activities will be March 21st. Again, if you have any questions, please contact our Recreation and Parks Department. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Councilmember Page, Councilmember Paley.
Thank you, President Ginther. I do have an announcement, since we're on a history buff this evening. I would like to announce the members of the public are invited to join us in celebrating the 203rd birthday party for the city of Columbus. The birthday party is sponsored by the Columbus Historical Society and will be held on Thursday, February 26th at 5:30. If you are interested in the birthday party, contact the Historical Society at 224-0822 with questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Paley, Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. I have two announcements. The first is an announcement regarding Mount Olivet Baptist Church at 7:00 PM on Wednesday. If you want to learn more about the Buffalo Soldiers, please go to Mount Olivet at 7:00 PM on Wednesday. The second announcement is that the Columbus Public Service Chapter 220 of the National Management Association will hold its annual speech competition on Wednesday, March 11th, 2015, at 6:00 PM at the Columbus Division of Fire Administration and Training Complex, which is located at 3639 Parsons Avenue. The event is open to high school students, grades nine through 12, and those who are also homeschooled. To enter, candidates must write a speech on the subject of leadership, time to four to six minutes, and submit it in double-spaced format. The speech, along with the entry form, must be emailed to BvTober@Columbus.gov, or Teresa Langer@Columbus.gov by Friday, February 27th. For consideration, to download this, please print the entry form, please visit www.nma-cpsc.org/assets/nmaspeechcontestformpdf. The first prize will be $200, and the advancement to the next level in the competition; the second prize will be $100, and the third and fourth prizes will receive $25. The winner of the entire competition will compete for an additional $5,000 and a free trip with room and board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Are there any announcements or information to be shared from our elected officials? City auditor? City attorney? Make sure that I'm not missing Judge Barrows down there. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance 460-2015; Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 388, and 436-2015; Technology Committee, ordinances 188, 358, 442-2015; Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 2627, 2949-2014, and ordinances 278, 279, 293, 319, 322, 360, 382, 435, 448, 450, 478, and 494-2015; Development Committee, ordinances 430, 463, 484, 489, 515-2015; Zoning Committee, ordinances 525 and 528-2015.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of expression 53X, 55X, 49X, 50X, and 54X-2015; Finance Committee, ordinances 310, 323, 385, 402, 403, 445-2015; Public Service and Transportation Committee, resolution 41X-2015, ordinances 294, 308, 311, 315, 346, 412, 415, 431, and 446-2015; Public Safety Committee, ordinances 97, 103, 105, 107, 154, 185, 314, 366, 368, 372-2015; Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 145, 174, 206, 215, 233, 238, 263, 271, 283, 338, 357, 380, 490, 498-2015; Development Committee, ordinances 351, 354, 362, 373, 374, 375, 376, 390, 391, 393, 394, 395, 399, 416, 491, 499, 500, 501, 502, 503, and 523-2015; Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinances 143, 343, 379, 396, 397, 398, 426, 432, 443, and 497-2015; Administration Committee, ordinances 329, 332, 333, 334, and 519-2015; Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A0006, 23, 24, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 34, 35, and 36-2015.
Thank you, Clerk Leavens. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Nathaniel G. Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium and share your name, address, any organizations you represent, and I believe we have you speaking in support of 0375-2015?
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel G. Wilkins, the chairman of Sullivan Vacant Amendment Property at North Linden area. 1074 Sullivan Avenue. I'd just like to know what's going to be done with the property, and also, I'd like to know if this person would like to have a higher standards on this property. I would like to know what's going to be done with the property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? Director, any additional information regarding this property in 0375 that you might have with you tonight?
Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. That property will likely be used as side yard expansion. We will be holding those property owners to the same standards we do with all buyers out of the land bank, where we will evaluate what's being done on the property and hold them to the standards in our contracts.
Thank you, Director. Any additional questions or comments regarding the consent agenda from council members? If not, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Harden Klein Mills?
Yes, with the exception of 0346, 0412, 0357, 043, 0432, 0329, 0332, 0333-2015, on which I am abstaining.
Page?
Yes.
Paley? Tyson? President Ginther?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. The first ordinance I have is 0280-2015, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Facilities Management Division to establish various purchase orders or contracts for emergency parts, supplies, and services to authorize expenditure of $60,000 from the general fund and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code for these emergency services and parts as necessary to declare an emergency. And again, these are for parts for the police, fire, and public service facilities, and also, as we know, that is always in our very best effort, that oftentimes, when our building repair becomes necessary, there may be not a purchase order or contract in place with the appropriate vendor for the needed part or service. So if the needed parts or services are of an emergency nature, there may not be time to procure such commodities through the city's competitive bidding process. As such, the ordinance authorizes the Finance and Management Director to establish contracts and purchase orders in urgent situations, and only those vendors necessary to provide the part, supply, or repair service needed to waive the relevant competitive visiting provisions of the Columbus City Code 329. With that, I would move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is number 0352-2015, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into three contracts for the option to purchase printing, copying, and related services with Harold Inc., Key Blue Prints Inc., and the Post Printing Company, and to waive the relevant provisions of Chapter 329 of City Code relating to competitive bidding, and to permit the aforementioned contract to declare an emergency. I'm going to ask Deputy Director Bush to give some information regarding this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, for giving us the opportunity to talk about this. With your support over the past year or two, we've rebuilt our print shop, and we've invested a sizable dollar value in equipment and printing and machinery. What this ordinance gives us is their ability to backfill. If you have an agency that has an emergency need, a quick need, a complicated need that we are not otherwise able to fulfill, then we have backup contracts to do that. The reason for the waiver in this is really twofold. One of the three bidders who bid on this post, we established a 75-mile radius for bidding, and they are like 79 miles outside. We didn't feel that that was detrimental enough to exclude them, and the other reason is our code doesn't allow generally award to multiple vendors. So what we're asking is the award to, the authority to enter into awards with all three of the vendors, and then, on a case-by-case basis, as we have a printing need, we'll ask them to give us pricing and turnaround time, and on that basis, we'll establish purchase orders.
Any questions from my councilmembers? If not, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. The ordinance I have in this committee is ordinance number 054-2015, is to authorize and direct the appropriation of $496,312 within the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to Columbus Public Health for the implementation of the Greater Columbus Infant Mortality Task Force, recommendations, and further the Celebrate One Initiative in 2015. It's to authorize a contract with Access Health Columbus for an amount not to exceed $190,000. This particular ordinance has cosponsors. It's cosponsored by President Pro Tem Mills and President Ginther. We had a hearing last Tuesday, and Erica Clark Jones was the, I see her in the audience, and she gave us a detailed overview of the Celebrate One Initiative, as well as certainly did Dr. Long. And so, as you know, that in Franklin County, more than three families experienced the death of baby before his or her first birthday, and Franklin County's infant mortality rate for 2013 is as high as the national rate from the early 1990s. And so, the infant mortality rate for also black babies is two and a half times that of the white babies in Franklin County. Our city has come together to tackle this tough issue, and President Ginther, with the support of the mayor and the Franklin County Commissioners, charged the Greater Columbus Infant Mortality Task Force to develop a community plan to reduce Columbus infant mortality by 40% and cut the racial disparity in half by 2020. This committee came up with eight community recommendations, and based upon those recommendations, the city is focusing on four of them, and the title of this initiative is called Celebrate One was selected. And so, we are excited about this, and Erica Clark Jones is going to be one of the individuals that is focused, who, not one, is going to be really focused on this initiative, and with that, we must have, the Celebrate One for 2015 takes a kind of a life course approach. We will first have healthy families and neighborhoods that set the foundation for this opportunity. And so, studies have also shown that the social determinants of... social determinants of health or the neighborhood conditions in which our residents live play a big role in our infant mortality crisis. And there are eight neighborhoods that this is going to be focused on, and of those eight neighborhoods, they comprise less than 10% of the Franklin County births, but account for more than 1 in 4 infant deaths and 1 in 3 non-white infant deaths in Franklin County. This, we've also realized that these same neighborhoods have higher rates of poverty, food insecurity, neighborhood crime, unemployment, and housing instability, and transportation barriers. But for the first year, we're going to focus on three of those neighborhoods, because, and then we're going to look at the success of those three, and then continue on with those others. We're going to be focusing on improving socioeconomic conditions, promoting safe sleep, creating a collective to support the strategy and implementation of this work and bringing other city leaders to this. So with all the hard work that these committees have, that the task force worked on, this is the commitment that the council is giving. The mayor has also put in a similar amount of money in his 2015 budget that we passed last week, and so we are moving forward to, again, to make sure that all babies have an opportunity to live healthy. And I know that the one other comment I want, two other comments I'll make on this, that one, one of our partners on this will be the Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers. I know they're working on the OBGY work that we used to do at the health center. They're now doing some of that work. And lastly, I know that there's been a lot of conversation around, there are other issues that affect this particular issue, and I want to say those four other areas are being focused on by others in this community. And I know that one of them in particular has been a topic of discussion around family planning, and there certainly is a group that's focused on family planning with this. But this is our role. Those other individuals will be focused on this, and you will be hearing more about this initiative, and we'll have many more healthy babies living in our community and being able to reach their full potential with the passage of this ordinance. And so, with that, I don't know if President Pro Tim Mills, if you will make any comments, President Ginther, if not.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you for being a phenomenal partner in this work, and to acknowledge President Pro Tim Mills. She served on the task force and with folks from across the community put together this plan that we're told is one of the most bold and ambitious in the country. And so, I think it's fitting that it's being done right here in Columbus with this council's leadership, that of the support of the mayor, the county commissioners, but also the health systems and the state and federal government are all focused on working with us to make sure every child in the city of Columbus celebrates their first birthday. So thank you for fostering this legislation and working with us to get it done.
Thank you. Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Chair. And I don't want to get lost in the thank yous, but I do want to highlight the fact that this wouldn't even be on the tip of our tongues without the leadership of Council President Ginther. And he really deserves to be applauded for the work that he's done to put this issue in the forefront of our minds, being a leader across all the partners in the health, the health sector, the business sector, that the leadership that you've done in our neighborhoods, Council President, to bring this dire issue to the forefront of the Columbus conversation deserves to be applauded. So thank you for the efforts that you've done.
Again, thank you. And as you, when I was mentioning about the social determinants of health, it requires everybody working on this, everybody, because of all the issues that I spoke about, it does require this whole community focused on this, and all of our committees focused on this as members of council. So with that, I would like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Harden chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Good evening, and thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance 0339-2015 to amend the 2014 capital improvements budget to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the streets and highways bonds funds, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders for the purchase of asphalt emulsion, asphalt concrete, and limestone and gravel aggregates per the terms and conditions of current universal term contracts, to authorize the Director of Public Service to contract with SUECO to waive the formal competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code for tipping at the SUECO landfill, to authorize the Director of Public Service to expend $1,500,000 or so much thereof as may be necessary to reimburse the Streets Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund for personnel and equipment associated with the alley rehabilitation progress, project, and to buy required commodities and pay tipping fees and to waive, and to declare an emergency. This is, as part of this project, Division of Infrastructure Management crews will perform work such as clearing, surfacing, grading, and leveling, draining improvements, and selective repavements. I just want to ask Director Davies to say a few words about this project.
Thank you, Chairman Harden, President Ginther, members of council. This ordinance will authorize us to expend up to $1.5 million for the alley rehab program. We're hoping to do about 35 miles of alleys. It's weather-dependent. Last year, we were able to complete a little over 30 miles. This ordinance allows us, our street crews, which are out plowing snow, allows them to do the work in the alleys, and it also allows us to buy the commodities and then to, we're asking for a bid waiver for SUECO so that we can take the debris from the alleys to SUECO.
Thank you, Director, and I thank the department. We're excited that we will be, once again, paving alleys in this year coming forward. So with that, if there are no further comments or questions, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That is all that we have tonight in Public Service. Thank you, President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Our next committee is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. The first is 108-2015 to authorize and direct the Public Safety Director to enter into a contract with Leeds Online LLC for access to the company's automated scrap materials and used goods transaction information management system, to authorize the expenditure of $64,400 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director Gianordella?
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council, this is annual renewal of our scrap metal program, which for several years now, with the help of, at the time, Safety Chair Ginther, when this was implemented several years ago, to monitor the scrap that was dropped off due to the high number of metal thefts that were going on in Columbus. We've then extended it to pawn shops as well. So this has been a very successful program for the city of Columbus, so much so that the state of Ohio, of course, recently has enacted a program which we are going to look and see what rules they promulgated for that. So with, we appreciate council's approval of this ordinance this evening.
Well, I'd be remiss not to highlight the leadership of President Pro Tim Mills when she chaired safety on this issue of scrap metal, of working with the Department of Public Safety, and of course, the Safety Department's leadership in assisting the state of Ohio in coming up with a comprehensive scrap metal program. This allows the Department of Public Safety and CPD to interface with scrap metal dealers, pawn shop dealers, which is unique to the city of Columbus, that we can interface with pawn shop dealers to locate stolen items, to hold people accountable for theft, for robbery, and really hold people accountable for their actions and throw people in jail if they belong for stealing other people's goods. So I encourage council's approval of this ordinance. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for question, or move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 342-2015 to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to contract and expend funds with the Franklin County Commissioners for the use of the Franklin County Corrections Centers for Housing of Prisoners, to authorize the expenditure of $4.6 million from the general fund and declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Moving on to Public Utilities. 53-2015 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Instituteiform Technologies LLC for the Blueprint Linden Lining Contract Phase II, to transfer within and to expend up to $3,917,125.85 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to amend the 2014 capital improvements budget. Director Davies.
Chairman Klein, excuse me, President Ginther, members of council, this is a contract to line public sewers that are in the Linden area. Rather than construct a new one or repair it, we have technology where we can simply line it. It's much less disruptive, much more cost-effective, and combined with, as you know, Blueprint Columbus is something that we're undertaking in Linden as one of the project areas, so we felt that it was wise to do this in the same area where we will be investing up to $10 million in a total package of infrastructure, both on the public, private, and green infrastructure.
Any questions or comments for the Director? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And the final piece is 20, or 0214-2015 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase funding to an existing agreement with InfoSend Inc. for electronic traditional bill presentment and payment application services for the Department of Public Utilities, and to authorize the expenditure of $1.1 million from the Water Operating Fund. Director.
Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council, last year, we switched to an external vendor to print our bills and also mail them. They're much more user-friendly, have a lot more information. They're much more timely, and as a result of that, we are extending that contract with the ultimate goal of being able to pay online for our customers, and we're working towards that goal.
Is there an ETA of when we could expect something like that to be delivered?
No, but I'm very hopeful that within this year, I'll have good news for you, but I would...
But the department's working towards...
Yes, absolutely. We're working very hard. It's one of the top requests that we get from customers, and we, obviously, at this day and age, it's something that we should be able to provide. So we're working very well with this company and hope to have something soon for you.
Thank you, Director. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that's it? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Development Committee. President Pro Tim Mills chairs the committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. The first piece is a legislation to present, is in development this evening, all has to do in terms of supporting Lead Safe Columbus. Lead Safe Columbus provides grants to qualified property owners in order to remove lead-based hazards in owner and tenant occupied units. These dollars are provided through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, and therefore having the opportunity to enter the contract with those who can help support Lead Safe Columbus. I'm going to ask Kim Stans to proceed to the podium. I present the first piece of legislation and ask Mr. Stans to give us an overview of Lead Safe Columbus, beginning with ordinance 0420-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Cardinal ATC to support the Lead Safe Columbus program, to authorize expenditure of $120,000 from the general government grant fund, and to declare an emergency. Please.
Share, if you could please share with us a little bit about Lead Safe Columbus and explaining the pieces of legislation that we will present this evening.
Be glad to do that. Council President Ginther, Chair Mills, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. As many of you know, Lead Safe Columbus has been around for the last 20 years. We've received over $20 million from HUD. These are all competitive awards that we have competed for and been awarded by HUD. This last round that we just received in December of last year takes us through the next three years. We have $3.9 million, and that money will be spent on making 250 housing units which house families and children lead-safe over the next three years. These contracts that are being set up here this evening with these ordinances will allow us to do the risk assessments, which will assess the hazards within those houses so that we can then make them lead-safe and healthier housing.
Please share with the listening and viewing audience about the coordination between this project and the Health Department and how that all works when necessary.
Yeah, one of our main partners in Lead Safe Columbus is the Columbus Public Health Department. We work with them because they do a lot of our outreach, and they also have nurses who work with us to test the children, to see if they already have lead poisoning, and help them to prevent any further lead poisoning. The Columbus Public Health Department's also got to help us work in our outreach in terms of determining those parts of the city where we will be able to target our outreach and find houses where there's more potential of children being there. This really fits into the infant mortality piece that you were talking about earlier, Councilmember Tyson, because this is about creating a healthier environment for children under the age of six.
Thank you very much. I, related to this particular contract with Cardinal, Cardno ATC, that they were selected as a program contractor as a result of competitive bidding process through the city's purchasing division. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0421-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Franklin County Public Health to support the Lead Safe Columbus program, to authorize expenditure of $120,000 from the general government grant fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And next, the final companion piece of legislation related to Lead Safe Columbus is 0422-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Hina Environmental Solutions to support the Lead Safe Columbus program, to authorize expenditure of $60,000 from the general government grant fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, in development, I have ordinance 0434-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to make loans and grants for operation of the various affordable housing programs administered by the Housing Division under the Affordable Housing Opportunity Program, to authorize expenditure of $950,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have in development. I'd like to move to the Environment Committee, if you will, President Ginther. Thank you. Tonight in Environment, I have the following ordinance beginning with 0296-2015 to authorize expenditure of $17,250,000 or so much thereof as may be necessary from the Special Income Tax Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to establish an encumbrance of $17,225,000, to pay refuse tipping fees to the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for the Division of Refuge Collection pursuant to an existing lease agreement, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, to establish encumbrances up to $25,000 for tire disposal, construction, and demolition, material disposal, and to declare an emergency. This legislation is annual legislation related to the tipping fees that we have successfully worked with, diverting quite a bit of tonnage, if that's the word that most people understand, of trash and refuge collection, allowing us to adjust our tipping fees expenditures. Over the years, we've had, seen a diversion rate to help us in terms of the cost, though the costs have gone, we would otherwise see an increased cost in tipping fees if we were not doing such a good job in terms of diversion. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0459-2015 to authorize a transfer of 2015 general fund contribution to the general government grant fund for the continuation of the 2014-2015 grant agreement with SUECO for the city's environmental stewardship program in the amount of $205,391, to authorize a transfer of 2015 Water Operating Fund contributions for the same in the amount of $66,810 to the general government grant fund, to appropriate the sum of the aforementioned amounts, which totals $272,201, to the general government grant fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, President Pro Tem Mills. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Recreation and Parks Committee, we have ordinance 0378-2015 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks Department to amend the agreement with Columbus Downtown Development Corporation for the development of the Scioto Greenway Project, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $2,741,000 within the Recreation and Parks Bond Fund, to amend the 2014 capital improvement budget, to authorize the expenditure of $2,741,000 in voted Recreation and Parks Bond Funds, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance 0451-2015 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Education in the amount of $2,400,000 for the 2015 Summer Food Program, to authorize the appropriation of $2,400,000 to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 283, to enter into an agreement with Columbus City Schools to implement the Summer Food Program, to authorize the expenditure of $2,164,000 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 283, and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask Director McKnight to speak further on this ordinance.
Chairperson Page, President Ginther, members of council, this is a contract that we do annually for the Summer Food Program. It's something that's extremely important. We, last year, in 2014, we had 256 sites that we provided, whether either a breakfast, a lunch, or a snack to, and did over 631,749 meals. So we know there's a huge need out there. Unfortunately, we still know we're only actually reaching a small percentage of the children that get the lunches during the school year and want to continue to try to grow that program. This council did approve earlier this year the purchase of a food truck, which we have in our possession at this time, and it's being outfitted, and we're, one of the things we're going to do going into 2015 is use this to reach some of the sites where the children can't get to one of the feeding sites and be able to get the lunches out there. So that's another step we're taking to continue to grow this program. So it's extremely important. It's extremely popular, but we still have a lot of work to try to reach more, more folks, but we're excited about this and we want to work to continue to grow the program.
Thank you, Director McKnight, and thank you for working to feed our youth across the city. I would also like to ask Becky Simonello with the YMCA, she's one of the site coordinators, to come and speak and for this ordinance.
Good evening, President Ginther, members of council, and Director McKnight. My name is Becky Simonello. I am the Executive Director of Childcare for the YMCA of Central Ohio. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of community organization, organizations who serve youth that receive the meals for the summer program through the city of Columbus's Recreation and Parks Department. The YMCA has partnered with the city for, to provide snacks and meals during the summer program since 2001. The Summer Food Program is critical to the summer, to summer programming. For many of our most vulnerable youth, it's the only consistent source of nutrition that they can access through the summer months. Last summer, through the city's Summer Food Program, the YMCA was able to serve over 31,000 meals and snacks to over 1,600 children, 21 different program sites. The Summer Food Program not only provides meals and snacks, it also attracts youth to summer programs where they can combat summer learning loss with academic intervention, participate in daily physical activity, and learn about healthy behaviors in a, in a very safe environment. Many youth-serving organizations like the YMCA rely heavily on the Columbus City Parks and Recreation Department for the Summer Food Program. It ensures that our kids that we serve throughout this summer get the food they need to stay healthy and to grow and thrive through the summer months. That is why I ask you to support the vital funding necessary to allow the Columbus Parks and Recreation Department to continue to provide the Summer Food Program for our community. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Simonello? Yes, President Pro Tem Mills. Thank you, Councilmember Page. Becky, I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work on this. I can remember the days when you and I were chanting "Summer Matters", trying to get summer feed to continually increase, and so I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on, on this issue and in the community and making sure children eat and have academic enrichment opportunities throughout the summer. You've been a champion for a long time in this space, so I just wanted to say thank you to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Page, and again, thank you for presenting this legislation to us. It is so important for our young people to be able to have nutritious meals during the summer, and I'm extremely pleased that we're going to have a truck that will be going out to different areas within our community, because there are a number of areas in our community that don't have recreational facilities or have a number of, or either any other, you know, recreational facility through the Recreation and Parks Department, or working with other nonprofit organizations that may not have access to get to the food. And so I think it's really important to have, to have this truck to go out to some of those areas and provide those meals to those young people. So thanks for coming down, Becky, but to you, Chairwoman Page, and to you, Director McKnight, thank you for this work, and I hope that we can continue to grow this program so that all children are able to have healthy meals throughout the summer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. That's all we have in Recreation and Parks tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Our final committee this evening is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Administration Committee this evening, we have ordinance 0335-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Human Resources to enter into a contract with the law firm of Baker &amp; Hotstuddler LLP for the purpose of providing assistance with the collective bargaining negotiations and related activities, to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all we have in the Administration Committee this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. There's nothing else to come before council this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We do have six non-agenda speakers, so we'll take those speakers momentarily, and we will, will reconvene for zoning, regular meeting number nine at 6:30. Motion to adjourn? Second. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers momentarily. Regular meeting number nine will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. I chair the committee. All members serve on the committee. This evening in zoning, we have 0355-2015 to rezone 4601 Central College Road, 43081, being 33.37 plus or minus acres located on the southeast corner of Central College and Ullery Roads from PUD 4 Planned Unit Development District to PUD 4 Planned Unit Development District. The applicant is Asherton Grove LLC, care of Steve J. Fulker, Architect 677 Notchbrook Drive, Delaware, Ohio 43015. The proposed use is single and multi-unit residential development. City Department's recommendation is approval. Development Commission recommended approval. Are there any questions or comments regarding this legislation? If not, I move to waive second reading. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Second reading waived. Now I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. 0417-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.035R3, Residential District 3312.21B1D1, landscaping and screening, 3312.273, parking setback line, 3312.49C, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3332.20, building lines, definitions, 3332.21D, building lines, and 3332.28, side or rear yard obstruction of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 3870 North High Street, 43214, to permit an educational kitchen and a floral design studio, including limited retail and cafe areas with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Tricia Wheeler and Sarah LaGratera, care of Kimberly Mechanic, Architect 1116, West Second Avenue, Columbus, Ohio 43214. Proposed use is an educational kitchen, floral design studio, with limited retail and cafe areas. City Department's recommendation is approval. Clintonville Area Commission recommended approval. No questions or comments regarding this legislation. First, I'd move to waive second reading. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Second reading is waived. Now I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 0424-2015 to amend ordinance number 2516-92, passed December 7, 1992, by repealing Section 3 in its entirety and replacing it with a new Section 3, thereby modifying the LC4 text in SubArea 2 to remove a maximum height restriction of 28 feet for parking lot lighting for property located at 3888 Morse Road, 43219. City Department's recommendation is approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation? If not, move to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency. Now I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 0425-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03C4, permitted uses, and 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located 101 East Moeller Street, 43207, to conform an existing single unit dwelling in the C4, commercial district with a one-space parking reduction. The applicant is Jennifer Brody, 101 East Moeller Street, Columbus, Ohio 43207. Proposed use is a single unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval. Columbus South Side Area Commission recommended approval. No questions or comments regarding this legislation. First, would move to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency. Now, second move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Anything else to come before the zoning committee this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. Have a good evening.